Good evening, everyone. We're gonna go ahead and call meeting order at this time. Please turn all the cell phones, electronic devices to off or vibrate at this time. And Councilman Conwittis, would you please lead us in our prayer and our pledge to be your servant?
Lord, Father, we thank you for another day. We ask to bless our children, our leaders, of our country. We pray for the healing of the sick, and we ask to bless us as a councilmate to make the best decision we can for the city boundary. In your name we pray. Amen.
In the light of the light of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, in the time of the United States of America, and through the reduplink, which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. All right, consider approvals of the minutes of October 2nd, 2017 meeting, please.
I can motion approve the minutes of one minute fresh.
One. Awesome. Do I have a second? All of ours say aye.
Aye.
Visitors who are not on the regular agenda will be given the opportunity to address the council on any subject at this time. Is anyone present in this, not on the regular agenda this evening?
That'd be me, because I'm the only agenda.
It's always here.
You may speak, sir.
I just wanna give y'all an update on that fire that we were talking about out here, what it cost, so y'all have a kinda idea. Uh, we had, uh, that fire was eleven hundred and fifteen acres. We had eleven trucks out there, and a hundred and twenty-six and a half hours, that cost ten thousand and one hundred and twenty bucks. That's what we got, if we get it back. Uh, we had two command vehicles out there for four hundred and forty-seven, thirty-five. Volunteers, we had thirty-two volunteers, that's including all our help from mutual aid, plus, plus us in our county. And we had quite a bit from home counties, so.
Did you own the crews, though?
That's all the want on Highway sixty-seven, right there, outside of Taft. So about fourteen miles out, so. Uh, we had three hundred and sixty-eight hours for those thirty-two guys at eleven hours apiece, little over eleven hours apiece. The water tender, we had a twenty-five-hundred gallon water tender at three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents. Our tender, which is as high as it goes, ours is six thousand, but they, they, uh, only take four thousands, and our, that was five hundred and seventy-five dollars. Now, other costs, I just, I haven't got to talk to any other departments about their tires and what they've lost, but we lost about nine hundred and seventy-four dollars in tires, and some other repairs that I don't have on here.
Does that include in the ten thousand one twenty?
Well, no, that's above the ten thousand one twenty. Uh, if you would've took the hours that those volunteers, and added it to the, to the total, the total cost was two thousand, or twelve thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty-two cents. If you just took minimum wage, which a lot of them probably didn't have minimum wage, and minimum wage is what, seven twenty-five? I think it was seven seventy-five. Now, I got the seven twenty-five. But, you know, uh, that was two thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight bucks, so that would've made the fire fifteen thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty-two cents. That's what we would've spent. We would've had to pay for it all.
That's just.
And that's just, that's just mutilating, that's not even considering what other trucks from the other counties, if I took in the, you know, coordinates of theirs and added it to this for the forestry service. And plus, we had two, two strike trucks, or two task trucks, whatever you wanna call them. And then, it was a strike team, I don't know, there was four, four dovers and a, and a maintainer. And each of those, each of those had a swampor with them, and then guys on the truck, so we didn't count those. But that's, you know, and I can't guarantee that the, the repairs and flats wouldn't go up. That, that's kinda what we spent on that fire, so we're, we're already at twenty-three thousand with the eight thousand from just that home fire over there, considering all the others that we did. But, uh, it's a good way to keep up with what we spent, as far as, you know, we know for a fact that we spent nine hundred and seventy-four dollars on tires that we bought. Everything else is just a kind of a, to give you an idea of what you would spend, or what the department is spending. And that's not even fuel either, so.
That's not fuel?
No, no fuel. And we were out there running down the dovers.
Would that be just our fuel, or are you gonna try to estimate everybody's?
I would try to estimate everybody, but you, the problem is, is you, we got, I guess, Tex- off, finally show up?
Tex- up showed up with these.
So that probably wouldn't, that probably wouldn't count who would.
Okay.
That's all I know.
Thank you, sir.
Did you see that for that wind filter? If I did it, I'd.
All right. Discuss an act on request from Stan Bickel, to close Park Avenue between Broadway and Sixth Street for the Hut and Gather on October twenty-seventh to twenty-eighth of two thousand seventeen. I guess that kinda goes to you, though.
I understand.
Right on time.
Why Stan's always asking, oh, hey.
You're up. They just told you. You're up.
Oh, really? I'm not sounding that good, yeah. I dressed up for it, too. We're working over there now, trying to get stuff ready. Uh, all I need to do is ask permission to close that street off again. We've got about seventy-five to eighty vendors, and we're gonna have some outside of them, like we've had in the past, and that's all I'd like to request, uh, if that's okay.
There's not a problem, Dean.
We'll make sure y'all doing that.
Make that motion.
Say it in the comments.
All in favor, say aye.
Can I leave?
You may.
If you wanna make a break for a little bit, you sit in here. Thank you, I'm sorry, I'd like.
No, you're right on time.
I'll take a way and get after it.
You're good. Thank you, sir.
See y'all.
All right, discuss an act to appoint John McAllister and land a plate for the Ballenger Housing Authority Board. You should have that in your packet, as far as requests.
Did he have somebody rolling off or doing that?
We're getting close, because normally you're gonna tell you whose dad's being reappointed. But she did.
Yeah, well, I think both didn't.
Does it?
I don't know if she got.
She's been in trouble. She's probably been in there eight months or better, maybe eight months or better.
I make a motion that we appoint John McAllister and land a plate to the Ballenger Housing Authority Board.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you. All right, discuss and consider an update on COPSync. Want me to do it? That might've been. Uh, we've had communication with COPSync, we are still trying to move forward with COPSync. COPSync is a good product, it's a very needed product. Unfortunately, we've had some issues at the top of their ranks that ended up, I guess you'd say embezzling somebody, or utilizing the funds, fraudulently, allegedly, allegedly, allegedly. They're, they're being investigated. Uh, did try to speak with a financial person last week, Miss Jen Row, which is now probably along with company due to their circumstances. But I had asked for a documentation stating the fact that they're new investors, uh, with legal counsel, as well as it being certified to us before we move forward. Uh, the information that we are getting is they are working towards getting another investor, but that is all word of mouth. I'm not interested in working and moving forward on word of mouth until we have the documentation stating that it's solid. Uh, they are looking for a ninety-to-one-hundred-and-twenty day turnaround in order to be in the court system. That's the projection. We don't know if that's gonna be how long it'll be or not. So, do you have anything else?
Ninety to one-hundred-and-twenty days is optimistic, correct, in my mind. Uh, I think this is gonna be more six months of, of writing down, it's in receivership. Um, GovCap, uh, will not fund anything COPSync on, and that's who we are funded with. We have not expended any dollars at all. So we still have, um, an approval with GovCap, um, but, um.
How long is it going for?
In perpetuity. I mean, we can go buy a hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of Chromebooks if we wanted to.
Uh, yeah.
Contractually, what have you signed with COPSync, and what are our contractual possibilities?
We have no, our, our contract with them is based on a funding availability. And, and this is a unique situation where COPSync is not fundable by GovCap. But, but we, we are a good bet COPSync is not. And, and I, I, with chapter eleven, um, my thought is this is gonna come out looking something completely different than what COPSync is. I think the product's gonna be there, I think the technology will be there. Uh, I think the end result will be there, but it, it might be Philip Park Enterprises or something.
But contractually, there's no risk to us pulling off until we do this?
No.
Okay, um, can I?
Yes, please. Um, right now, we are validating our computers and our, uh, vehicles right
now. Um, it's a day of basis if one of them breaks down, or something happens to them. I know that COPSync has third-partyed the equipment to a group called Root Mobile, who will, uh, purchase and install the equipment. Um, the quote I have right here halfway printed off through the email, um, is actually less than what COPSync reported us. So, um, that's the main thing from us right now for the police department, is the equipment.
The hardware side, because software, you're still utilizing, correct?
Yes.
Based off of.
Our quote for COPS, COPSync that was approved was, for the PD was around eighty thousand dollars. Forty-two of that was hardware, the thirty-something left over was software for four years. And so, um, I would like, um, permission to get that forty-two, so I can get the hardware installed. The extra thirty, we can hold off, you know, pay by year, pay by month, whatever we need to do down the road. But that hardware, I didn't, uh, that hardware I can use with any other software, if COPSync go down.
You need an actual tablet or.
Yeah.
Did you do tablets or tablets? Like a tough tablet?
Yeah, tough tablet.
It's a tough tablet or something.
Yeah.
The reason we were going to that actually is because the first time around, we actually had used equipment in some of those.
And we're still using that used equipment, which.
It was somewhat antiquated when we got it, and that's for sure antiquated.
Yes, and that was five or six years ago.
What kind of software would you run with the hardware?
Right now, there's nothing that competes to COPSync. So I don't.
What are you using COPSync today, or that?
Yeah, I mean, we're using it. So you can, Corey, can they seamlessly take COPSync off of?
What's that we got now?
Yeah, it's just a, it's a downloaded software that we can delete.
And they just take our license number?
Yeah. Uh, there is a webinar this Wednesday of what's gonna happen with COPSync. Um, I knew that you have an investor called Co-Op, I think is what it's called. Um, that was on the email, should've burnt it off. But, um, there, there's been a webinar, what's gonna happen, this and that, this Wednesday. So I'm signed up to watch it at nine AM. If y'all wanna come into my closet and watch it with me, you know, can?
We can watch it in here.
We can watch it in here. So.
I think we can, I'm ninety-nine percent sure we can pull the trigger if council wants to, on the hardware.
So total hardware for Root Mobile is forty-one, three nineteen.
Forty-two.
So let's say, let's do some, for, for, for what happens. So what if COPSync actually just disappears? What do we do?
I don't.
I'm just saying, what, what if, or whatever means where I disappear.
We're gonna work tomorrow, there's not work.
Right now, I would have to go through two, maybe three different companies to get what I'm getting in our COPSync.
But the hardware itself would still be the same.
Hardware itself is still the same.
Okay.
That's my question.
So it'd be like if Windows failed, you can, you can find another replacement for this?
Yeah, I mean, if COPSync was Windows, you can all pick up a Mac. So.
Not a lot of complaints.
Yeah. Yeah, not that. I don't, I don't see COPSync, COPSync going away, may change its name.
Change its name or change its background, but there's investors that are looking at it, pardon me.
But what we're talking about here is just the hardware portion of it.
Yes, that's all I'm asking.
Well, but the question becomes, will they fund the hardware portion?
Yeah, they'll fund the hardware. I mean, as long as you're not buying the hardware directly from COPSync.
No, I got a quote here from Root Mobile.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's a totally different company?
And Root Mobile's different now.
Yeah.
Stan, we wouldn't still be under the sixty dollars a month per unit maintenance fee, right?
What are we paying on that, this stuff, for licensing?
Um, it's like a hundred dollars a month for each officer.
For each officer?
That ends up being like, I think, eight grand a year.
Yeah.
So.
There'll, there'll be a licensing fee regardless if we say version one or version.
But that won't change.
Before the ride, it's sixty dollars per unit, per month, but.
No.
I think it was nine, nine-nine, ninety-nine per officer.
Per officer, yeah.
It's not based on how many units you have, it's based on how many officers you.
How many licenses, yeah. So it's, it's gonna be around eight to ten on the licensing, but the licensing fee, I don't know what they're gonna come out with, but they do their due updated version of COPSync, for that software's, that licensing fee will be. They will probably go under a contract, not with us, but with about eight hundred other agencies across.
Shouldn't we ever consider that COPSync now was one thing, that was gonna be ten thousand dollars due March of eighteen, that was never out there anywhere?
No.
That was COPSync, that was what?
That was Nexol.
That was.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's what, back in February.
Yeah, yeah.
There was two of them, there was Nexol.
We're listed as a creditor, because.
Be getting a list, be getting favored for two years now.
Yes.
Even though you don't have a contract.
Yes. We're listed as a creditor because, um, we were in the process of a transaction, and, uh, um, we got wind that this could happen.
Now, they're the type of guy that, uh, they're working on business, right?
And as far as I know, I talked to Chief Follow, uh, and Winters, and the sheriff, they're still going with COPSync as well.
Do, what version of software do they have?
I'm not sure. Uh, software version, I'm actually updated. It doesn't matter whether you pay so much or not.
It's all off the cloud, it's off the internet, so they can't care if it all depends. Part of, part of my issue is, I know for a fact that COPSync has basically jettisoned ninety, ninety-five percent of their tech support. Um, they used to have twenty tech support guys, they have now whittled that down to five, and I think they let another three go.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure on that. I know it's a little harder now to get tech support, but, you know, they'll call you the next day.
Yeah. Um, that's, that's a concern. There's just a lot of questions, and I don't think anybody can give concrete, solid answers. I'm comfortable with the forty-two thousand on the hardware side, I'm fine with that. Anything beyond that, I think we would be wise to take a wait and see approach, to see how they come out of this.
I mean, even before we started the, you know, upgrading, you know, we were on a yearly contract.
Yeah, yeah.
We paid eight, eight thousand.
Yeah, we paid it, yeah.
And that's all.
Do, do we need to get this quote from the agenda for next meeting? Can we approve that quote? Or can we do that?
I get it, dear, I'm.
Bonita rules matter?
Rules next to.
I would say that you have to put it on that agenda, because you're just getting the update on.
Right. But you've, you've already agreed. You already approved the hardware at one point, you did it back in January, but if you wanna clarify the record and put it on November the seventh, um, we can get the wheels in motion, and everything would be continued upon council approval on, on November sixth, or sixth.
Six.
No, I can't, I can't have y'all have a meeting next week, can I?
Well, technically, we want to approve.
Yeah, you already approved it.
The problem is, we need to modify that motion with hardware on.
I'm trying to remember what the original motion said back in January. Um, I know, I'm trying to remember. I know it, it was a new meeting, I know that much. I know the guy stood right there, and I know you made the motion, and I know he said it. If Sam can wait, and if you wanna do a call meeting and just have a five-minute meeting next week, that would be sufficient.
I mean, I, I can wait.
But honestly, you can put the order in. Um, I can get GovCap to sign off on it. That's, that'll be a phone call in the morning.
Yeah.
Forty-two thousand of the, I think we're approved for a hundred and twenty, so forty-two's gonna go to hardware, which I think is less than what the original budget was anyway.
I mean, the rest of, I only had a, the rest of it was our department.
Yeah.
So, I mean, for sure, it's all that way.
Do you need, while we're on this train, do you need a?
The hardware?
Yeah.
That's what y'all ought to do, I mean, why would you, why wouldn't you do that? I mean, that would be in, in the long run, that would probably be the best.
Nineteen, that was.
I mean, there was, they're gonna reuse a lot of our hardware. We got new hardware.
Yeah, I think we were only allowed, uh, four new tablets, and the rest were gonna be.
Well, that's something that I thought we had talked about, that they looked at some of that hard, old hardware, and said that they were gonna end up getting newer hardware, because some of it wasn't gonna.
Uh, I can't remember how much, or how many trucks they were gonna put that in.
Right.
So, um, technically, I only have three good laptops that can be passed down.
Well, that would probably, I mean, we're talking about putting one in my truck, one in Clyde's truck, the newer truck.
Right.
And then the rest of them go in grass drugs, whatever we have left, we put in. Because you really don't need, you really don't need that in the, in, in-city trucks, to tell the truth, because what we're looking for, what we're using, gonna use it for is.
Grass. Interacting about, you can't get this.
Well, plus, we, we can, we can divide up and put trucks on one side, and we can follow our trucks, for sure. They know where they're at.
Okay.
It's a safety issue for, for.
Oh, daytime.
Especially at night, something like that.
It says, consider not taking COPSync. Can I make a motion on move before we get hardware purchased?
I'd say so.
And then table the rest?
Table the software, authorize the hardware, table the software.
He's writing it down. So moved. All right, so. Do I have a second?
One second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. We can move forward on the hardware only, and keep us posted on that, please. And actually, if you can, Stan, if y'all are gonna work, find out what's going on, if we need to combine it and get that doing. I don't see why we wouldn't just get all the hardware at the same time. Do you have a fix that?
I'm not sure.
Right, okay. Did you save the motion? Can you repeat the motion again?
So with, with the hardware and table the software until such time as?
Yes, sir.
COPSync issues.
Just make sure you add information to that.
He's made the late party this weekend.
That's, that's all. All right, move it along. Discuss an act on winter water rates.
So, when we lowered the water rates back in May, uh, we lowered them down to five dollars and eight cents per gallon, to increase consumption. It worked. Uh, consumption went up, and we just billed for around a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty thousand for water for the period from September fifteenth to, uh, October fifteenth. Um, historically, consumption's about to take a nosedive, people are gonna put water in their yards. Um, and so, uh, one of the things we discussed was implementing a winter rate schedule, and getting us on a winter, summer rate schedule, uh, where we can lower water rates in the summertime to encourage green yards. Um, but yet the city doesn't take a hit financially through a November, December, January, February period. And so, um, we can move the water rates back up to seven dollars and eight cents, or we can do it in any way, any sort of fashion that you want to. Um, our consumption will probably drop by about twenty percent by the time Christmas rolls around, and so, uh, at five dollars and eight cents, you're probably looking, going from a hundred and forty thousand to about a hundred and ten, uh, a month. So you're looking twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars a month of costs and revenues. We have a water revenue bond payment to make, December first or January first?
December.
December first. Um, and so.
So what was our rate for the load?
It was forty dollars base and seven dollars and eight cents per thousand. And I wanted to clarify some things. The, the forty-dollar base rate, the way we have it set up, that is tied to our debt service and capital improvements. So, um, when we say we're gonna reduce water rates by a certain percentage, it's not the base rate. The base rate pays our debts. The per thousand rate pays the maintenance and operations. We also are going to do, I'll update that on council here, on city manager report in my.
So what's the recommendation?
My recommendation is that we go back to a winter rate schedule of forty-dollar base and seven eighty per thousand.
I made that motion that we go back to our winter rate of seven eighty per thousand. We leave the base.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We, do we wanna revisit that, March? Because water, water consumption's gonna go up.
I mean, I would think we just wanna set a schedule.
Yes.
Two times a year, one for forty, two for summer rate, probably, and one for two whatever.
But there was one of those months that we, even though we lowered it, we were still in the hole.
It was May, and, and we're planning catch-up from that.
Well, because everybody's not used to that yet.
Yeah, they weren't used to it. And then, but yeah, used to it in July and August, I can say that. Just you two.
All right, thank you. All right, consider approval of building permits, but I don't believe we had any.
No, it's be that way, no.
All right, move along. Here's the police activity monthly report from Chief Stanley Maresch.
Well, uh, I got on the slideshow, national night out, um, Tuesday, October the third. Yeah, October the third, there's some pictures that, courtesy of myself, Jason Gore, and other people that posted on Facebook. Um, it was a real nice turnout. I'd say we had about a hundred, a hundred and fifty out there. Um, we even had chicken leftover, we were hanging out, so. Um, that was good turnout. We're expecting to do it again next year. So, yeah, hopefully, at the same time, might have an open house on NCT. So, that's what.
We'll see.
So, now, we'll, we can either move it somewhere else next year, or keep it in the same spot, but we had a real good turnout.
Was it a bad spot?
No, it was not in a bad spot. Um, the only problem I think we had was those little bridges. Um, might look at either removing them and repairing them, or I, or just getting new ones, or whatever.
Too narrow, too rickety?
Some of them too narrow, too rickety. Um, I walk on them.
Um, I walked on them beforehand. There was one that was teeter-totting a little bit, showed some rocks underneath it to make it stable. So, but there was, I think there was a lady or two, um, elderly people that had walkers that couldn't...
Oh, get through it.
Get through it, okay. So, uh, maybe some of the city can go get it, redoing those. So, other than that, um, when something went down, we had a fight with mosquitoes, but on that, it was great. So, um, I worked with out there. I think we enjoyed it really good. Jason was out there. Amanda, Amanda was big help. She was, she, she helped me a lot. I'm not used to the whole, whole meetings, so she was, so she, she got to help me in that direction.
Good.
So, um, other than that, we had 110 citations issued.
More than that bit?
No. So, um, total eighteen rest name. Um, I don't have an intimate report for some reason. Uh, 14 accidents, 348 calls for service, and court fines were around a little over $700, $600.
14 accidents?
14 accidents. And that's either blue form or an act.
Oh, so you actually have blue forms with that C?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, if they're minor, and they're on file, they're probably going to hand them the blue forms, and they go all red. So, but if anything major, with a thousand dollar damage, we have to do a report. I think about 50, 50. So, the way they call, if there's someone opening the door too much, and the other caller, that won't work. You know, that's a blue form instead of an act. So, any other questions, Stan and Sam?
Keep looking at it, man.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right, here's the city administration, five, with the report, please. You have your, in your pockets, you have the financials for the period since September 30th, which is also in the fiscal year. Um, I'll let y'all look at those. Uh, we went to, uh, TML, um, had a very educational trip. Um, it was Bonita's first trip in 43 years of the NC secretary. And, uh... Uh, we, we took away the cameras, so you can't have the evidence. Uh, while I was down there, I had a chance to visit with the TML, um, on a number of issues, mainly our liability, uh, issues. Um, they are encouraged with what, with how we're handling things and how things are progressing. Uh, let's see, what else have we got? Um, upon approval of the minutes tonight, Phil Springer, uh, will give us minutes from the corporation, so the depository contract will be resolved for the next five years. We, uh, we've hired a part-time guy to, uh, fill some, we have a sickness, a long-term sickness in the street department, and we've hired a part-time gentleman to take care of some of those things. We're probably, um, we're running low in the street department numbers-wise. Trying to get those, uh, some of those things back up. Um, other than that, um, I had something else I was going to put in other features in, but we'll do that later. That's it. Any questions?
Can we end of the year in the pool?
Yeah, just a little bit. We were over in the pool, we were over the streets, we were over in, um... We did transfer 25,000 from the airport back, although that'll be a lot of big things that we'll do. Um, our court fines are down 40,000 from projections. And so, you take those three factors, um, that'll get you about 3% of our budget. Uh, Philip likes to say the goal is always zero. And, uh, we did do a little bit more streets than we planned on doing this year. We got out of Verski's a little bit. Um, when you get down to that park, there's just a little bit more. We did some other things that I think will pay off, and we did them while we were down there. The, uh, the sewer tap for, um, the Harvies, the swing out for the Harvies. Um, just some materials that, quite frankly, you're down there, you got your guys down there. Get them up, go ahead and get it done. Our, our sales tax is up, um, second year in a row that we've had a record sales taxes. It's a, it's a, to the vendors and the folks, uh, on Hutchins and some steel company out on, uh, out on San Antonio Highway. Um, but, uh, the sales tax numbers are, are a strong thing. Everyone else is reporting down. We were reporting up. And so, it's a testament to the, to the folks here. So, thank you for selling your shirts and socks and scarves and chicken fried steaks and barbecue sandwiches. Court fines are down. Uh, we budgeted 85. Court fines went, we brought in 44.
What were the actuals last year?
The actuals last year? I want to say they were 50 plus.
What?
About 50,000.
Right, yeah.
Fifty, maybe 60. I can pull, I can pull last year's and find out.
Last year's actual.
So... I was, uh, $64.36 off on estimated sales tax. So, you can hit me with the wet noodle.
All right. Your request for future agenda items from city councils, anything else we need to get on the agenda, please?
Well, we took care of... Yeah. Um, the next election, the next agenda, the next meeting will be the night, the day before the election. And so, I, I anticipate a light agenda. I'm not sure if there's something that's just burning. You got a...
Remember the sixth?
I remember the sixth. I may ask, Bo, are they going to use this as a polling location? I may, if it is a light agenda, I may text y'all to get your feedback to have a new meeting so they can come in here and set up. Um, otherwise, they're here 5:30 in the morning trying to set up. And that way, we can be done, and they can get out at 5:00, and everything, they good to go. So, keep that on, Chris. All right.
All right, move it along. Val, your seat, council committee executive session is authorized by Texas Government Code, section 551.074, personal matters. Is there accepting or resigning to Mr. Ryan?